Okay, just calling the meeting to order. It's 7:00 PM on the 17th of April, 2014. And first item is to take a look at the agenda. Okay, any changes for the agenda?
Yes, new business, we need to add a letter from Colleen Ladwick. She was a lady who we had a double booking for a birthday party. I'll explain more when we get to that. You can stay in for as much as you can.
So it's re- birthday party?
Yes.
No, we'll just put 'em on.
I'm staying for as much as I can.
Okay.
The kiddo may not last forever.
Understood. And we may need to move that earlier so that Erica can speak on it.
Okay, well, we have a guest as well tonight. And you're going to be talking about that interagency, whatever it is. And so maybe with everybody's group, we could do that after the minutes. Do both guests and then carry on with our work.
I like that.
Would that be good?
Yes.
I like that. Okay, so we're moving the letter and we're moving the interagency agreement up to after minutes approval.
Sean, what was your last name again?
It was Ladwick, L-A-D-W-I-Q.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, public comments?
No public comments. I do have one. I have been asked by a citizen to read a letter.
Okay.
In public comment period, I have not previewed the letter, I have not opened it, I do not know what it contains.
Do you want to do the board issues first and then the public comments or...
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
The citizen's not here too.
So they can wait for a couple seconds.
Honestly speaking, maybe. Sure, yes.
Okay.
It's a public comment. The board issue is on the agenda first.
Yes, I noticed that after I said "public comment." I was just out living and trying to get back to our agenda.
I'm with you.
Backstroke, that's right. Okay. Last week, we approved Gino Wolf as the new director. And then a subcommittee was set up to negotiate the details of the contract. The subcommittee did its work. The matter was turned over to Nathan. And Nathan went through all of this change that's been going on with social policy. And drafted a contract which brings it, is right up to date with what's required. So we have this almost as an example of a contract. And I'm afraid I just got it two days ago and so I gave it to you yesterday I got it. And I'm sorry it was actually noticed. I saw Gino today and he signed the contract. It seemed quite acceptable to him. And so as long as it's okay with us, he's here. And I think everybody agrees, sir. I don't think we need another motion for that since we agreed to select him. So anyways, our announcement is, Gino will be the director and he's taking office as of Monday. And he understands the six-month probationary period, which isn't in the contract but which we will use as a mutual thing. But we'll evaluate his work and he'll tell us any problems he's experiencing in his job. So that we can work two ways and sort of start again after the six months if there's any misfire. Okay? So that was the appointment of the director. And thank you guys. Everyone here on this table worked like dogs on that. I'm really appreciative. Okay, public comments?
All right, you don't have to go to all those places unless you want. Citizen's letter.
Real quick, before you do read that, just for the record, since you just brought that up. And once again, I told you guys today, thanks for allowing me to be part of the meetings for the past three months. It was awesome. And I just wanted to go on record as saying that it's been a pleasure to work with you. And I know he's going to be successful because you all are amazing people. So thank you. Sorry.
Does it say something when the audience is made up of staff and their guests? That's a little scary when you think about it.
Okay.
Thanks. You didn't.
So this letter commends as follows. During the past eighteen months, it seems some simple truths have been lost. The district is the people's business and the board represents the people. The board is not the protectorate or a lobbying arm of the staff. The oath which you all took is not an oath of loyalty to one another, it is an oath of loyalty to law, ethics, and right conduct in governing and guiding the people's business. You are not a club. You represent the public and your voice is to be the voice of the public. The staff is employed for the purpose of bringing the people's business. They are employed to serve the public. As you bring in a new director, you are deemed to provide him with a clear path of understanding about what that means. You must clearly define what you expect the people's business to do. The standard by which you expect it to abide and the objectives which you expect it to meet. Eleven months ago, several EnWAC swimmers clearly articulated concern with Mr. Patterson's coaching company. Competency. You've heard their voices and ignored their message. Throughout the year, you have heard ongoing concerns about the quality of his work. You have remained deaf. You have watched registrations collapse in the pool ending. You have turned the other way. When a longtime EnWAC parent pleaded for your attention due to skills program management, you overlooked the message it suggested to Mr. Patterson that he... Assage to messenger. Mr. Patterson's lackluster performance has revealed a weakness in your leadership. You have allowed Mr. Patterson to define the objectives. The tail should not wag the dog. You must define the objective and establish and build a pathway to the objective. Instead, Mr. Patterson adjusts the objective to align with the outcome. Each month's head coach's report reads like a proportionless effort to make the unthinkable look reasonable. This month, he goes into minute detail about plans for the upcoming meet. But for the second month in a row, states that he is formulating a plan to address the scheduled two-month absence of his silver team coach. An absence that started two days ago. He trusts that you will place less value on knowing that he has effectively addressed the absence of the coach of 28% of the team's athletes and twice as many swimmers as the himself coaches. Then you do on knowing the name of the meet referee or that the meet awards will be here on time. What do you want? Do you want to highly motivate a good team? A fun after-school club? A team that teaches youth the attributes of success? A safe after-school care program? A fitness program? An extension of swim lessons? A team that draws interest? Other district programs? I cannot conceive of a standard by which you could assess Mr. Patterson's performance and deem it acceptable. It is failing by every conceivable measure. Athlete performance, number of registrations, financial solvency. These attendance numbers, parent engagement, retention. While there may be other ways to measure the efficacy of his work, I don't know what they would be. The incoming director deserves to have a rational basis for evaluating Mr. Patterson's performance. Mr. Patterson has authorized the collapse of the participation, athlete performance, and finances of EnWAC and have endorsed the collapse of his insurance. Before he sets foot in his office, the new director is crippled by your unwillingness to define the standards that which you will evaluate this program. Your response to the collapse of EnWAC is out of sync with your obligation to guard and guide the people's business. The new director is to build a pathway to accomplishing the objectives of the people's business. And you must set aside your personal loyalties and make those objectives clear. End of letter. Well, the best part about being asked if we could respond to this even though this person's not here to hear this. And I have to apologize, I read running late. Not only did I forget my stuff, I forgot the newspaper that I was going to issue this person. And I'm guessing, I'm throwing a softball out there.
Well, I would like to know who wrote the letter.
A person can remain anonymous in that great, that's all part of it. But behind anonymity, you can also hide your lack of courage. It's one thing to come and look somebody in the eye and say, "I don't like the way you're doing things." It's another thing to write to a coward and write a letter. Of course, it's easy to throw darts at us. God, I've heard them for two years about...
You're not, nobody's criticizing you.
No, 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 nobody's ever criticizing. But the point I was saying about not bringing my stuff is I intended to bring, as I told Steve, a newspaper should this person start on another public comment rant. And I didn't even have my newspaper sale times to bring out, not that I was going to be disrespectful to you, Dave. But to be disrespectful to the person who wrote the letter, but it would have been lost because they're not here. In response to somebody saying that Jared's gone, he's on a two-month deployment. The time that he leaves is not one that is firm. It changes. And sometimes it's not something that you can actually tell your boss, "Hey, this is the day I'm going." He's active duty, maybe. He gets a timeframe. He does get a timeframe. But it's not always firm when he's going to leave. There's, I'm sure there's an answer. And I know, I've noticed there's coaches with all the groups when I'm here. Matter of fact, I've seen you coaching more groups than I've seen anybody else. So it'd be horrible should the head coach step in for one of his assistants while he's gone. And I'm not quite sure what finances you've wrecked since you've been here. Since we control the finances, that's kind of amazing. But thanks for wrecking finances that you have no control over.
You should have seen what you did to the pump.
It isn't. So, and it's, it just, it's the pathetic, the pathetic rantings of somebody who doesn't even have the courage to come in and talk to us or to even address the board. So I just want to...
Okay.
And I will, I will make it clear that prior to reading that letter, I did not know what the content was.
I would just, as a father of a child on EnWAC, I would continue to say thank you for what you do for the kids. And I do appreciate it. And I know there are others that do. Don't let this deter you and don't let this discourage you. Yeah, I think, I've watched swimming or played around with swimming for, I don't know, how many? Sixty-two years now? Sixty-four years or something? And I've seen lots of coaches. I've seen, you know, exceptional coaches, I've seen normal coaches. And you're on a real learning curve, you're doing really well. I would support what you're doing right now and just say, "Keep on going." And kept the hideout for the last year with that.
You know, the trick is really, as a parent raising a kid, is to, how do you take the good things from someone and grab a hold of them and hold on to them? The previous coach that was here. What we've chose to do in our family is to do that. We've taken those wonderful attributes he had, we've held on to them, we've let go of some of the other. And that's what I want my child to get from you, though, that there are wonderful qualities to be possessed. And there are some that maybe you will fall short on. And, but that's okay too. And I want to teach her to let those go. And hopefully, in the end, I've raised a child that's well-rounded, you know? Because that's what we all want, right? And I think that that's the thing that's got lost in all this, that, you know, is not just you as a swim coach. But the character that you possess is, it's good stuff then. And that's, as a parent, as paramount as anything you'll ever teach my child about swimming, is the things you just teach her about being a good, decent human being and being positive. And I don't want this to be a recreational team. So at the same time, I want it to be a team that's ran by a person that has integrity and honor. And I thank you for that.
I'm in a unique position to have children sitting on two different swim teams. Different coaches foster and bring out different African children. Not, coaching is not one of those one-size-fits-all skills. Most definitely, previous coaches here have run children off. And children are going to leave because of conflicts with current coaching staff. It's part of life. It's what's going to happen. I, my child appreciates the opportunity just from the coach building, especially this one for Coach Jared. So, you know, this is a program, there's always room for improvement. And that's the important place.
We've received the letter gratefully. It's going to be there. We've responded. And on to the next item in the agenda. And you've heard the dues and the sanctioning from the board. Minutes for approval, 27 March, 2014.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for March 27th meeting. And the...
The only ones that were there.
I second it.
Okay, any comments? I've been writing and I've picked up a number of little pink twos and so on that are missing, but I don't think they affect the meeting at all. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this means minutes are approved. Voucher review. And then we'll get to the two guests.
I have a question on voucher review. Did we, I didn't see it here and unfortunately, Aaron's not here. Did we ever pay, reimburse Scott? Scott, Steve, it was...
Scott Clark?
Scott Clark, thank you, gentlemen.
We were going to cover his hotel. I don't see it in here. I don't know if it's on one of the charge cards.
It was on my charge card.
It was on your charge card? Excellent. I just wanted to make sure that happened. I didn't see it here. Okay, so it's on my... Yes, that was my only question. So we will see that next month.
I hope so, it's not a totally silent factor answer.
That's not a bad house. And he was here for...
Two days.
Did you cover both of those days?
We said we covered, I don't know what we covered in detail, but we were going to cover his accommodation.
Of course, I would imagine the one being here. I was about to say, I don't think we covered that. I have no further comments on the voucher.
Question on the fishbowl locks. Was that in, you're talking about the locks in this room right here, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And why did we replace those? Let me see.
Because we did have all of the tees.
Okay, thank you.
There are some, there are some sensitive materials that will...
That's fine. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Any more questions, any more questions on the vouchers? Somebody move that we...
I would like to make a motion that we approve vouchers 467805 to...
Is it 6189 maybe? The next call back home.
Yeah, let's not go with the county warrant number. Let's go with vouchers.
I think it'd be easier to figure out.
6189 to 6219 for the amount of $28,258.39. And the payroll transfers from M&amp;O account to payroll account of $40,137.39.
All in favor?
I second.
You second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Unanimously. Okay, Erica, do you want to do your thing first? Whatever it is.
Oh, that was...
Or did we do it with the letter?
No, that was me bringing up the email. Okay. All right, we had a, I've gotten a couple emails from this woman, the next lady. Colleen Ladwick is one of two grandmothers that came from up. And she's the less emotional of the two. It's the nice way to say it. We had a double booking on a young lady's...
Birthday party.
Birthday party, November 9th. She was six years old. And she, at the time, the big hubble blew up. One grandmother went from zero to sixty rather quickly. You actually came in to the pool to take care of this. Thank you very much for doing that. And our cashiers who were here, I fell on their swords, apparently did a really great job of dealing with all parties involved. Refunded this family the money, mankopa, mankopa, big time. And they keep stating in emails that they want a year of swimming for their daughter, a year of swim pass for their daughter. Because we double booked, booked, traumatized her birthday, you know, because she didn't get to have the birthday that she wanted. And as I talked to the one grandmother, look, unfortunately, we did make a mistake. I said, "I can tell you that I can't, nor can any one of us give you a year pass." Definitely not, even for Erica. She goes, "Well, she should have." And I said, "Well, she can't do that. You know, we can't gift." And I tried to explain that to her. And I said, "But, you know, we can talk as a board, we must ourselves and say, 'Look, this was wrong. What can we make it right for the future?'" So it happened in November, she's written me a couple times and I've said, "I miss me, I couldn't work myself." And so now I'm bringing it up. She, this lady feels wronged by the district. Everyone liked us to do something, we liked it. One grandmother feels very strongly, the other ones just kind of lukewarm.
So the birthday party?
Uh-huh.
They still had a birthday party. It just, it was a shared pool. Why don't we give them a, is there any way we could give them a party for free to where, hey?
They did, well, they got, they paid for the private party, so they, it was $150.
Yeah.
They got every last cent of that back. So they, they got the, they did get a free party per se. They used, the whole, the whole group that was here was able to use the room and able to use the pool. Create a charge with that reimbursement that they could give them. What ended up happening, we had a new cashier, it was the new cashier's mistake, she didn't read the form correctly. That form has been modified and changed to the point where we, we're going to be able to avoid, hopefully, doing that again. They modified what they needed to do upfront to avoid this to happen again. I came in, I talked to her, and she was very insistent, and I believe I did explain to her at the time that I can't make a public gift such as the year's pass because we are a public entity. We can't just give all the funds, so to speak. But I could give them the, I authorized that we give them the cost of their party back. And I did talk to Bill Walker at the time, because he was still the director, who went along with me and said, "Definitely regret it the way I didn't give that back." And so I authorized it at that time.
How old is the child?
She was six. It was her sixth birthday.
Is she a swimmer? Is she...
No. I haven't seen them in here. They primarily use the wading pool. The kids were screaming, laughing, and having a good time.
What about this? What about if you contact her and see if she would be willing to take, to give the child swim lessons, a free, a free month of swim lessons, and I'll make sure the money's there for her? It's not gifting it that way. It's not, it won't be the board or the pool doing it. I'll just, I'll find the money. See if she would be willing to do that. I mean, because we could, I mean, there's a potential here to make them friends.
Right.
And it would be awesome if the child comes in and maybe learns to swim and is excited about swimming and they understand that, you know, that it was a mistake and diffuse that. Forty bucks?
That's $40, yes.
$40 for a swim lesson, yeah.
Is there a sibling?
I'm not aware of that. I, I don't know.
Say if there were two kids.
There were several, there were several children. And the children, from my observation, this kind of passed over them. They, they were out just having...
They were having fun?
They were having a little time. But the adults were very upset about it.
I think it's, I think that Steve offers a really generous offer. We can't do an action as a ward. But I think that if you could write the letter if you're dealing with her, and I'd certainly help with that. Over 20 bucks, it's not much.
I'll throw it. What if, and, and not just kind of...
No, 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 no.
I'm just trying to think outside the box. Because the grandparents' concern is that we defied this child of something that was important to her. By important, the six-year-old, and the six-year-old loves the pool. What if we were to give her the opportunity to be an honorary special guest for a specific event? And we can use, for example, if there was, if they could fit into the schedule, an exhibition, non-sanctioned race during next week's swim meet. To where she could put the timer, she could announce it, she could do something like that. I mean, it wouldn't be a race that mattered or counted. And so, you know, therefore you could grab an ample turn or two, wanting to do that case.
As, as upset as the grandmothers were, I don't know that that would, like...
Yeah, I'll be honest, I've talked to the, and she even says, Colleen here says that she's the more rational of two. And to give everybody perspective, the other grandmother committed to call the cops and have our pool staff arrested for breach of contract. And said, actually said that everybody else in the pool was trespassing because they owned the pool for that period of time. So, so that's, that's where this other adult is coming from. So as noble as I think both ideas are, I have a funny feeling there's, it's one of those, no matter what we do, we're not going to lose.
Yeah, but I think that...
But I think we will make both as offers if that's okay with Coach Bill.
I think what Steve has said, though, can be cast so that, what we're trying to do is give the kid something that would be really useful for the kid. And so that if the grandparents are interested in the kid, they might see that the starting into swimming lessons with no financial obligations on their side is something which really does give the kid something.
And you know what? We'll throw in a pair of goggles.
Are you ever going to really...
Yeah, I feel good. Kids are cool.
I'll try to make that count.
Okay, okay, so we're just going to do that.
I'll take care of that and let everybody know. Thank you, Erica.
Sir, you're going to talk about an interagency agreement or something or other that Bill is trying to talk to you.
Hey, the sun came out for you to speak, did you see that?
What we have is, we have, Bill had drafted an outline of the program. And we sent the question because we're a publicly funded agency and we're, we have really tight financial rules around us. So we have to find out what's happening. We sent the preliminary thing from Bill to the lawyer. And we brought the lawyer's answers back, which are a go-ahead for the first con, first three phases until we get to that investment level audit. And then we have to send it back to the lawyer again. So that's what we've done so far. We haven't acted on this first three steps as Bill had explained it to us. But we really would like to learn as much as you want to tell us about how this thing works.
I'll just quickly introduce Mr. Mark Foster, Vice President of Development and Energy Services. Mark is another professional from Representative Desert Air. Are both state and/or USA Swimming certified organizations for the purposes of supporting consulting and design build services and equipment repair and construction for projects like just we have, facilities like just we have. And so Mark has graciously offered to come up a second time. He came up about a month ago or so toward the facility with Matt and myself. He's done a preliminary audit on the facility, which I believe is attached in here as well. And I thought it'd be a great opportunity for him to be here and to answer any questions for, to kind of help you understand the process, the department, DES, State Department, how that runs, that process runs, a little bit of context of other projects that he's working on right now. So we'll just leave it up to Mark and offer you his, his introduction. Mark, wait a minute.
So should I just start out with a little summary and then...
That'd be great.
I'm going to try and go in a linear fashion, but there's a lot of moving parts and pieces. So there's been a mention of a company called Integrity Energy Services. We are a qualified agency through, as Bill mentioned, a department of Washington State called Department of Enterprise Services. And they have a program where they facilitate energy efficiency projects with public entities. So K-12, higher ed, municipal districts such as yourselves can, are able to utilize them to conduct audits and projects. So that's, that's kind of the overview, that's what that inter-agency agreement is. So it's not with me per se, but it's with that department. And then we are kind of the technical experts that partner with that department to carry out the actual work and enable proceedings, if that makes sense. So, what prompted, I guess, our connection with Bill is some issues with some of the equipment functioning here at the pool. So, we came up, took a look at it, a few specific things, and I'm hoping, not to get into too many technical detail, but essentially the system that controls the heating and air conditioning, the heat, heating water system, is having some issues. And so, part of what we knew in our analysis is we take a look at your energies because we want to, we focus on fixing equipment and replacing it, upgrading it, or repairing it. But what we also want to do is make sure that your building is running as often as possible so you can produce your utility, mainly gas by my experience. What we found in looking at the last three years of data was that the energy, the gas usage has nearly doubled from 2011 until 2013. So, I've only done one preliminary walkthrough, so I can't tell you exactly why that is, but we have, some of the problems that Matt's been describing are probably linked into that. So, I guess the next step is a more detailed audit. And I think, I don't know if you have that in your hands, but what that would be is essentially identifying the projects that could be performed and reduced.
There are two audits that were mentioned. There's the, the sort of preliminary look at the, at the whole place, which is done before we start getting into financial commitments.
Yes, and that's essentially already been done. It's a, it's a fairly brief overview of the facility, if that's what happened.
Then there's supposed to be another agreement, which the, which we would have to sign as a district, which gives the commitments that starts the other audit, this major sort of investment-grade audit, as it's called. Now, the lawyer wants to see that agreement to make sure we're not stepping outside of our financial capacity. So that's number one. Number two is, what would we get out of it? Like, if we do sign this, if you're here, maybe you should tell us why we should sign it.
So that, that's kind of the next, that's the preliminary. So, another piece of this program is that there's funding available through another state agency, the Department of Commerce. The state legislature, legislature allocated $25 million in last year's budget for energy efficiency upgrades for the same entities that we have, municipal and state government. There was a round of funding that was just awarded in, maybe in March, and they awarded about $14 million. So, the next round of funding is coming up, and it actually changed the date to September. But I think there's going to be about four to five million dollars available in September now, and in that, the next seven, now being the 25 million is going to be available sometime next year. So, part of what going through this state program, the logic is, is going to pursue some of that funding to, to conduct. So, it doesn't, it's a competitive grant process, so there's scoring criteria. And essentially, for this, for this round, it's, there's two major criteria against it. How much matching funds do you have? And then what is your energy savings of your grant?
So, so it's matching funds and what's the other part?
Energy savings. So, that, that's part of the reason to do something like this, is that there's funding out there, but it's not 100% funds.
Do you assist us with the grants?
Yes, yes.
So you have a technical writer that does this?
We have, I write the grants. I've been working with school districts and agencies for the last six years, pursuing these. Had a pretty good success, so...
I was going to say, what's your success rate?
I've got to get the recent tally, but it's, it's pretty good. So, full background is that I've been with the town for about a year. Prior to that, I was with another energy services company. So that, my success prior was with another company. This last round of grants, we worked with two cities, City of Fife and City of Bellevue, and got both of them grants. The maximum award for any one entity was $500,000, and City of Bellevue got that full award. So they have a $500,000 grant for energy efficiency, an additional $105,000 grant for a solar array on their service center. And the overall amount of that project's about $2 million. You know, I'm just giving you those numbers, I'm not saying that's what this would be, but... And then Fife, the, for that project, I think, I think got about $130,000 of Commerce grant money for just under $400,000. And that's of their water center, so... Bill and I talked, there's some things that we were looking at here are not going to be at that scale necessarily for what we're at at Fife, but that is the potential out there. And then we also bring in grants from the utility companies, like PSC. So, Fife is an example, they got around 60, or connecting with the project this summer, but the utility or company to power down there agreed to give it, it's in about $60,000. So, they're essentially getting one-for-one for their money, they're putting in about $200,000 to about $400,000 for the project.
I was going to say, matching funds. So, we're talking a complete match with the grant, so for like a $500,000 grant, we need to come up with $500,000 also? Is it two-for-one? Is it, you know, one-for-one on that? What is it on them here?
That's, that's all part of it. Ideally, you want to go $2 of your money to one, two or three to one, to maintain, to be competitive. But it also, there's a lot of other factors that go into that. If you have a really good safety opportunity, you can kind of hope that that part makes that for maybe not too much match. So, you have to go in to, you know, to that with either, we can talk in more detail about that. But I think Fife, for our person, would end up two-to-one. So it, and it'll be interesting, because I've gone through a number of these rounds before, and this is kind of like a quick second round follow-up to this last round where everybody kind of went in. So it's hard to say, sometimes it may be a little less competitive in that round, but that's not, I can't guarantee that because I never, I'm sorry. I didn't want to address another part of what you would get out of that, that type of grant audit. So, we, we would do some more serious engineering, not through a full design, but more energy engineering and also design work, and then fully come up with budgeted costs that were to construction-grade estimates. So, the end of that report is a proposal that says, "We're going to conduct the project for this amount, guaranteeing we can't exceed that."
That's the investment-grade audit that you referred to.
And that's, and then at that point, that is, that's really the, you know, you've got the investment-grade audit decision point. And then you've got, once that audit is completed with a full, what we call, energy service approval, you have a price for the design and construction of that, a guaranteed price, fixed price for that, and then a guarantee on the energy savings as well.
And how much is the audit cost due for?
Well, I, I've handed in a preliminary proposal for that, for my support.
Is it?
I didn't see it.
I see. I saw one of them.
Yeah, that's got the bond across the top.
This is it? Okay.
Oh, here we go.
It's, so, I'm just going to hand out this to you.
Is there a cost figure in here, though?
Yes, so they, they said, oh, it's four.
I must have looked at it.
I didn't see it at all.
Oh, here it is. Fee for engineering services, $9,200.
So, this is-
Thank you.
This process is, is unique because it's, it's a... Public entities generally have to go through a design, bid, and build process. This is essentially a design-build process because we're guaranteeing a fixed cost that we won't go above. So this, this just outlines that real simply on how that process normally works.
And again, this is step four on your, on your little, on your charts. And so that's $9,000 there on this. What costs follow after you've done your, your audit? We have the, then we have to pay for the actual program, and that's for the matching funds that are required ahead of time, or what's, what is the whole work?
So, the way this with timeline would work with, if you go ahead with the investment-grade audit, we would take a few months to, to do the more event, you know, do the study and put together the engineering and pricing. And then, assuming that you want to pursue the grant funding, we would help write the application pretty much, do most of the legwork, and then maybe, oh, maybe some more details that you have pretty to.
Is that in addition to the audit?
No, no, that, that, that's all part of the audit. So, preparing the grant application and then pursuing that, and so on. They had, I believe, they literally just changed the date from, I think, sometime late June to September. So, it's been pushed out a couple of months. But, you know, my line, generally when you pull these projects together, if you're counting on grant funding, then you essentially wait for three or four weeks for our Commerce to tell you.
And I know, I'm tossing a, not a soapbox, a pretty hardball here now. Because I'm thinking matching funds.
Yes.
And before I, and the reason I, I'll be honest with you, before I even think about making a motion or anything to look at spending $9,300 out of our budget, I, I, and I understand it's a testament, and I wouldn't hold anybody to that. But think about matching funds, because we're, we're going to have to go to the public and watch the reserve very closely if we do this. What kind of damage are we looking at?
So, Bill and I have discussed that. I usually, I really do normally shy away from, I understand each other, because our business is so, we, we don't even know, you use the investment audit to scope out the project, so we're, we can pre-scope, you know, we can find something out there. But, you know, I use, I use the, I can use the Fife example as a benchmark. That's a $400,000 project, and they do, they're doing some pretty significant measures there that we're not even really looking at here. So, you know, I'm thinking it may, I think we talked about maybe half that or-
So Fife got $400,000?
For the energy-
Was their total, total project cost? And their grant was four, again?
$130,000.
$130,000, and you said they went in with a two-to-one, so...
Yeah, and, but then they also got sixty, they got $60,000 from the energy utility. And, and the utility money counts as part of your match because it's law.
Because that's what you're going to save in the long term by the more gas you're shitting.
Well, no, that's, that's actually, that's a straight five hundred, so...
Okay.
And then you get the savings beyond that. So, another thing that, as, as I said, we saw your, the gas usage go up almost double in two years. So, in 2011, the cost didn't quite double, but the usage did, but the cost went from roughly $36,000 to $62,000 last year. So, if you can say, you should, hopefully you find, I mean, that's, so, part of this effort is getting into the exact things that are going to need to be addressed regardless, because you've got a control system that's, that's Matt's kind of holding together, and it, it needs to be somehow brought back into better control. Because I, you know, you have good visibility to that, I believe, right? And no, ours, how the system's operating, so it's all about- You know, there's going to be something there that hopefully allows us to save a large chunk and give you back, even if you don't get all the way back to the $35,000, $30,000 you saved for $20,000 a year, that's all, that's a good sum, that's right, that's a really good savings.
So, if I understand correctly, I think I'm just trying to look at it, or, Joe, for everybody, you have a grant application advising perhaps a two-to-one kind of ratio. But any kind of savings, energy savings, that would come from new equipment, new controls, and so forth like that, would just be adding to or breaking down that, that ratio. We'd get more benefit from-
Well, yeah, I mean, so again, there's, there's the two, there's two components. There's the, there's the incentive from the utility, that's the upfront, that accounts for your ratio, that's incentive, and then there's the year-to-year annual savings that helps. That's how you calculate the payback.
Take $8,000 out of your reserves and you figure saving $20,000 for the ten, the next 10 years?
Right, exactly.
Right, got it. Well...
Yeah, it, it makes, a lot of times it makes pretty good financial sense. So, there's a lot of, there'll be-
Age of ours, you're-
The city of this office.
Mark, how much would you say, just as we've generally talked about, and looking at this as, as a full scope, but mind you, this can be phased, okay? That's always, request can be phased. Looking at the full scope, I mean, at the end of the day, if it is, from what you're proposing now, how much of a brand-new HVAC system you would be, what percentage of a-
Well, this is a big, yeah, so, I mean, the general rule of thumb is a DDC system, early control system is about 10% of the, of the mechanical. So I think that's about maybe 10% of the mechanical system. And then the heating water is about 20% more of that mechanical system, so... You're getting, you'd be getting about 30, 50%, unless you get a 30%. But it's not going to be all new equipment, obviously, but it's going to be operating as new, or roughly as new. So I think, I mean, the controls, the controls is probably the biggest operational concern, and then the gas, figuring out why the gas is, is so high is the biggest cost concern and part of the biggest unknown.
So where you're saying that there'd be potentially a 30% replacement, but in reality, a greater functioning towards 30%?
Yeah, and, and, and a lot less cost, because in here, it's not going to be a full DDC replacement. It's going to be a optimization of the current system.
You mentioned phased, and when you mentioned that, I thought about this. You said the next round's September, and then there's another round after that. If we start this now, is there anything that says we have to go after that September round of grants, or can we wait for the next one? So that allows us more time to even reach out to the public for maybe some public funds or something else? Because that's-
Yeah, yeah, you could, you could.
When is the next round after September?
I, I don't, they haven't released the date, I guess, or it's got the, after the-
New fiscal?
The new binding starts in July, so technically, I mean, it's, it can come at any time, but I would guess they're going to put four, six months between September and the next.
Okay.
My understanding is, if the control systems are not working because of the software issue and contracts, then every day that we don't do this, we're working at the best we can in guessing what the system needs. How much would it be just to install a software system rather than do the whole thing?
Well, that's, that's part of what I need to get more into depth on, too, so I haven't even started to truly look at it.
But that, would that-
That's, that's part of what I think needs to be done, but I just haven't gotten into the details of what that's going to take.
Yeah, would, would that be in the investment-level audit, or would that be in the preliminary audit?
That would be in the investment. That would be in the investment.
That's, so it's after the next threshold in the sense of, we're committing ourselves to?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the preliminary audit is intended to essentially, you know, and you, it's, it's intended to say, okay, is there enough here to, to move forward and look at some issues? So that, that's really what we're, and we do, we know that there's some issues here, so.
We could probe that real quick.
So, you know, I, I can always do a little bit more legwork to find out the feasibility of it, but I think we're going to have to work with the controls vendor to nail down exactly what needs to be done. So that's what takes a while.
So I've been thinking, I'm thinking to myself, you know, September will release in 25 months away. We've got the wind in September and here we are before people at the same time can't really afford to put it out till next year because we are spending $7,700 on, on gas, gas alone. And if that's double what it was two years ago as far as the usage is concerned, that's only going to continue to go up. At that rate, we're talking $90,000. We're spending on gas, so which is, which exceeds the budget that we, that we set this year.
Don't tell me about the pump right now.
In your experience, Mark, what is the average timeframe that a public agency needs to go through this process, processing all the Ts and designing all the Is?
Now, for, you know, there's a lot of variables. I always preface my answers, turn it somehow. It's, it can be done in three months. You know, considering it's one site, it's not a multi-verse place, it's schools, which we travel all over the place, so it can be done in three months, but that's, you know, every time something gets somebody's desk, they're addressing it right away. So I, I think it's feasible to get the audit done in three to five months for sure. But as it sounds like part of your, part of your effort is going to be figuring out if, if, how you're going to match your funds. So that, that's, that's a different track. I mean, and that's, you know, it's not about what that takes for you as far as to how you, how you get public input or...
As part of your initial audit, and I imagine that's what these items are here?
Yeah.
Optimize DDC, recondition HVAC, cool boiler, light upgrades, seal control. That, those are referred items that would fall underneath our scope of work that we're looking at doing here. Does that have any, was there any kind of cost estimation done with that to figure out what, what it is we're looking for?
So again, you mean as far as what those items would cost?
Yeah, is it within our scope to, to have some contractors come up and say, here's what it costs to do that kind of work?
That's, that's what, part of what we do when we do the investment audit, is pull that pricing together. But again, it's not just, it's not just kind of a law. It, it, when we get done with it, it is a full on, we're going to guarantee we can get it done for this much. And if, so, I mean, you could get quotes outside of that, I guess, but the issue with that is, especially for, again, the gas situation, we don't know everything that's causing that. So you could ask a mechanical contractor what's going to take to refurbish that boiler, but that might not be...
Only they're going to get three ounces of food.
Exactly. And so that's, that's, that's a challenge a lot of times with public agencies if they don't have, you know, something actually scoped out to some level, it's, it's still just kind of lagged because each guy's going to see it differently. And, and that's, contractors are smart, they do the work for a living, but they might be looking at it differently than, than how you want it scoped. So, so nobody's going to have the price yet. But again, I mean, that, that, it's a pretty big variable in my mind as to what, why that gas is so high. And that, that is really the main effort of figuring out what that is.
It may be obvious, but when Mark refers to guaranteed maximum, this is not the technical energy services where it is a level above that, state of Washington.
Right, yeah. Maybe it falls on our company, but therefore as the, as the administrator of the program, they are able to oversee that and make sure everything's above the board. So the good thing, nice thing about this process is if, if we came in underneath, all of the savings go back to you. It's not like we keep that maximum amount, it goes back to their owner.
Something else you could say, so if, there's no guarantee about the matching funds. So say we did decide to do this and we shot for September and the matching funds didn't come through, we could reapply the next time, correct?
Yeah.
Have you ever seen that to where that happened?
Yeah.
Okay. Whereas if we waited till spring to do it, it, the money may not be there after that.
Yeah.
And this would actually give us two chances to go after that money.
True, and, and you, you have, I don't want to, I don't know how you guys would approach it, but I've seen entities where they, they have avenues to get funding, but they're not sure. So they've even gone through and they're working that, they're working the funding while they still have the application. And again, you're not obligated, I mean, yeah, it's probably take a little PR hit for Department of Commerce if you don't take the money. I had a higher education institution walk away from the funding after, after they were over it, so.
Are there strings attached that would cause them to do that or what's the story?
I think what happened there was it was a, it was a very politically charged type of project, it was a really big project, and they decided not to do it, so.
You're describing the whole procedure.
It was a biomass boil and, what are they, bird woodchips instead of natural gas. And the community was kind of got a little bit of a uproar for it, so.
So while we, and one thing I want to ask, while we go down this lengthy road, which you know, sounds, sounds like a wonderful road to go down, we should decide to do it. My question to that is what the heck happens to you day to day coming in and doing the witness test to fix the computer and the ambient temperature in our pool without having the, you know, controls? I mean, how do we, how do we deal with the day to day operations in our facility?
Very, very carefully, unfortunately, and hopefully nothing else breaks, but unfortunately it's not happening either.
Don't tell me about that, right? Let's talk about temperature control and everything.
Uh, temperature control is pretty easy because we actually, you know, because we do take readings on it pretty much every four hours. I can adjust that and keep those pretty much, pool temperature pretty much the same. I've been doing it these last two months and it's, it's a work, so I'm going to roll with it. Now, the, the temperature on deck gets a little squirrely when it, when it, when the temperature drops, I have to do, I have to close the, the flaps a little bit orange and stuff like that. So I work with it.
What's your guess on the gas usage?
I don't, now what?
What's your gas, a guess on where the gas usage is?
What is my guess?
Yeah. Is it the hot, whether it's the hot water tub or is it?
It's not the spot because that's not separate.
They're two different.
So it's on, it's the pool system.
Two different heads.
Using that guy.
Yeah, so it'd be the backside that has the two heaters, and then we just turned that, we just changed that last year, that were running, you know, pretty much constantly. We, you know, we got those and then you have the boiler back there. Those are the three things that run on gas.
But if you changed out the two and the gas, is the gas still going up or was it something went up and plateaued when you looked at the?
We just had data for the last three years, for 2013, so I haven't, I haven't seen in the last couple of months.
So would this be after, or like our new?
But if you said it's seven, that's, that's even higher because, since looking at what we just approved as far as the voucher, you know, we just, we just said we're going to pay just eight natural gas.
Yeah.
And I'm going to assume that this is a one month statement.
And it's at, now it's $24. Is that the two meters?
Oh, man.
Yes, it is.
You know, if I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a mechanical technician, so like, I'm not even playing on TV, honestly.
You have to stay at a holiday with your friends.
You just saved 20% off. No, but in my employment experience of working for Puget Sound Energy in the gas division many, many years ago, and as my current capacity, doing inspections on these systems for the city, you know, there is that, that optimal parameter which they are supposed to operate. And systems, complex systems like this use computers that are inside the, inside the units themselves hooked up to the, to control. You know, we're, we're set up back there to have something that is monitored 24/7 by a computer system that will make those adjustments using readings from various sensors in, in the unit itself, in the exhaust, out on the pool deck, in the pool, all those things, all those things combined, we can't do all that.
Third James Rogers?
Yeah, third James.
Thirteen, thirteen different sensors. I, if I had to guess, why are we using so much gas? Part of it is because Matt's not a computer.
It's better to be a person, don't worry.
And the other part of that would be for a large portion of a 12-month period, we were operating with the best equipment. You know, equipment that we knew needed to be changed, we knew was not off the operating effectively and properly. That would be my guess.
Yeah, I was going to say, the controls, so one, one was there's a heat recovery system there that's supposed to take most of the heat that's being exhausted, you know, heat from the exhausted air and give it back to the supplier, so you don't have to fire those gas first and then full fire. But that's being handled by the control, so that, it might not be happening or is it happening at a very low percentage of efficiency. So even if you have great new gas burners in your supply, you provide the heat, they could be great burners, but if they're firing at 100%, you're using way more gas than necessarily heat yourself. So that, exactly to your point, if you don't have the controls, it's...
And so a couple of months ago, we looked at purchasing a new computer system, software system. And I imagine that probably came with controls for the, for the unit itself, it probably wasn't compatible. You know, we're looking at the $5,000 about?
About, around about $5,000.
Which would have saved us some energy, I'm, I'm certain. Would that have been a long-term, would it have been the best choice for the long-term? You know, how much money can we save over the course of three years, five years, the life of the unit? But I, I'm not convinced and I think that there's a lot more to energy savings. Well, I know there's a lot more energy savings than just like how much gas we're using through, through our, our furnace. There's the State Energy Code, for example. Every, every three years, the state adopts a new energy code, it gets more restrictive and more restrictive and more restrictive. And a lot of that comes down from the federal government as far as mandates. We're a little ahead of the curve as far as where we are and adopting the federal standards, but those things are coming and at some point we will be expected to make improvements to our, our facility and that'll be mandated by law, I'm pretty sure.
Because I think of this pragmatically, just in the stuff that I understand, do you have a copy of what this next contract would look like so we could get an assessment of exactly what obligations we're entering? You have the 9340, I think it is in that report, but what exactly is our financial liability as we move, if we move to the next stage?
Well, so the interagency agreement essentially allows you to enter into that, the next phase as far as pursuing the investment audit, so.
Yeah, but we enter then an obligation to pay for something or other. And there has to be an agreement which we're signing which defines that obligation.
Yes, so that will be provided by the state, DES.
But we would need that before we have our decision on whether we're going ahead or not. We have to have that approved.
So I think we could have Joe provide a, sort of copy of it. So Joe from the state provide a copy of it.
I think we need, well, we definitely need that before we go anywhere. I'm hearing the importance of doing this and the dollars and knowing what our financial situation is, sort of. And I hope it'll be sharpened up in the next month. We haven't got a lot of money to play with, but we're also wasting a lot of money by the sounds of it, so that we have to take this very seriously and look at it, but we have to also be very careful. And the piecemeal, trying to get something that can read the sensors just by itself and forgetting the windows or something for now, may have to be an alternative. I don't know. The audit would be helpful in many ways, but we have to see what we're obliging ourselves to because of the constraints on a public agency and the fact that we really need some guidance from the people that understand the law and what we're getting into.
Might be worthwhile to consider contacting Joe Sullivan and arranging for a time to have him come up and if there's a subcommittee for this project, this set up, no need by commissioners, meet with him, have him present the contract and come walk through that.
Well, we would send it to a lawyer to get it checked, to be sure of what we're, what we're signing. What do you think, Steve?
I think that's a pretty good idea, actually.
Have a subcommittee?
And I would, you know, I think that Dave has experience somewhat with working. Dave, you guys listening to this?
No, he's not listening, but we'll, we'll, we're sorry. We'll point him anyway.
Yeah, we're talking about a subcommittee to meet with Joe from the state.
I'm getting volunteered to do what?
Kind of being volunteered. That's what happens.
You know, you know something about this, so maybe you'd be a good member of the subcommittee with somebody else to talk to this guy that will explain the contract.
And it was Sean.
That's fine.
That's what? That's because you guys were, you guys were talking.
We're trying to find out how much we spend on gas.
We thought you worked very well together, though.
We're actually, we're trying to figure out.
You worked extremely well together.
Okay.
Now we know one inch, one side of the table.
Are you, are you, are you free to do this type of thing if you understand anything about it, Sean, or?
I'm happy to.
Okay, so, how about a proposal to set up a subcommittee of Sean and David to work with you and Joe Sullivanism?
Yes.
And go through the contract. We want a written copy because we're not moving one inch until the lawyers have checked out exactly what our obligations are under it, okay? But I think you've done a good job at explaining to us why we're in big doo-doo.
I've got it. I didn't keep very linear, I had to use...
It's okay, I'd lose if you were straight.
Seven. One question, or you could ask a question.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. My question is, and I know Dave already mentioned, made mention of it, you know, getting, getting a new system for 5,000, you know, and that's a rough ballpark by David, but it's thrown like a band-aid on a huge gashing emulsion. But is that something that maybe we should think about? You know, we're spending that much on gas, you know, we're spending $7,700 just in last month.
I'm not... Does that actually bring our gas bill down? Having Joe, having like your controls, it's an unknown. It really is an unknown. Now, if they were to... Now, if they were to, uh, let us see how their, how their system works on our facility.
He was, oh, very good. You're looking, you're looking, you're like, really?
It's a heck of a test.
It's, it's, hey, I wonder if you'd call, if we're walking out, we gotta install that.
Guys, that would be a legitimate question to probe with anybody that you were talking to online.
Oh, you have the interest.
And don't feel restrained, just go for, you know, what we need next, we need to get the thing working properly. Um, okay, so is that agreed yet, everybody?
We're appointing, right?
Yes, you have been appoint, well, we could have a motion if you'd like it.
Whatever, it's true to your ways.
Okay, do you want to move that we set up a subcommittee to take, to explore the interagency agreement, um, implications with Joe Sullivan?
You're gonna, you as the chair, sir, can appoint a subcommittee at any time?
I know that, but I thought, but.
No, I was just suggesting.
Okay, so we have the subcommittee then, let's not bother with all that stuff. All right, okay, are we set? Awesome. Mark, thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
Matt, is it, or Mark?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, you'll probably see us again, who knows? Thank you. Drive her back to Issaquah?
Uh, Seattle.
Seattle, okay. I thought I, I thought I heard Issaquah somewhere.
Yeah, that's my, that's my office.
Okay, be careful driving.
I'm so sorry, I try to work at home, but, thanks, guys.
Thank you, be careful driving home, there's Starbucks leaving town. There you go. Anybody want to take a break for three minutes, are you all okay?
No.
We're good, okay. Staff reports, next item on the agenda. Um, well, if Bill's involved in the staff reports, one thing I could say, just on the, um, update on the court cases, is they're finished. Um, Hancock is, uh, you've got it in the background there, has made a judgment and, um, it's over.
The Robinson case?
The Robinson case.
Right.
The Romney case was, came to with the mediation, so it was finished there.
So Robinson, um.
They're gone.
And, does that mean that, uh, the district financially settled with Robinson or is this?
It means that other people will financially settle. I have been in, that's the other thing I wanted to mention, I've been in touch with the state auditors, and I gave them a copy of the two letters, the one on the Robinson case, the one on the Romney case, um, saying that we were not prosecuting or pursuing anything because of the mediated agreement. And Ryan said, fine, great, thanks, we've got them in the files, and so we were covered on that.
I did, um, did an update, I don't think Chris Curly knows that I am no longer chair.
That's all right.
I, I. There's an update in the cases involving, uh, the King cases.
All of the other ones?
Yes. Um, there is nothing new.
We just have one outstanding and active, two outstanding and active.
Two. Nothing new, but they should have a conclusion on one, and it's out for review right now. So, um, we should be done with both, both of those, and no new cases. So just these two, with no indication of any new cases. So that's the latest for Chris.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I won't put that in the minutes, or something.
Uh, we can, we can say that in.
So I'm gonna have to reconstruct these minutes, I think I've got enough to do it.
Okay.
We can say what?
We can say, we can actually say that in the minutes, because I can say anything named and named.
Okay, so two cases still.
Two cases still outstanding, one coming to review with no new cases pending. That all can be said.
One, two review, no other new ones.
That's correct.
Okay. Staff reports.
Just get that covered while we're waiting for it.
And we've done the integrity, energy, whatever. Kid Rock Fitness Club, aerobics.
Yes, Kid Rock. Can, uh, we advertise for a coach?
We have four, we have, yeah, we have four applications that have come in. Um, I did put the advertisement out again because we haven't received a big turnout, we only have one. So since I reposted it two days ago, three days ago, uh, three additional applications have come in, and, um, I've had two calls where people have indicated they were gonna come down and pick up the packet to apply. So, um, what I did with the position is I left it open until third, so we'll continue to accept applications for a little while, but, uh, looking at what we're getting so far, we do have a few, a couple of applications.
Well, if you might have a contractor on board who can facilitate, um, being, uh, that's so tired.
We do have an employee of the month, um, Burkaco Steele.
Shyam.
Shyam. Um, a Zumba instructor who seems to have made a very good impression, um, you signed his article, so do you want to speak to it for a minute?
Uh, yeah, and Burkaco is a new Zumba instructor that has basically taken place by storm, and her popularity is exploding as far as her classes are going. You've got pages about her, has, uh, bank borrow fees, deal, whatever they could, for more pool time that she could continue to add classes that they could participate more. Very enthusiastic, very popular, very, very knowledgeable in the Zumba area, and even the other aerobics instructors are now attending her classes to learn from her, so she's, she's really an asset, and we're really thankful that, however.
I'd like to say this, and I think we need to pull that, uh, employee of the month, because she is enjoying five days, well earned, by the way, her husband's my boss. Uh, so, uh, she's, she's enjoying five days, uh, vacation in, um, Mexico.
Are you telling me I'm supposed to write this up?
You should, no, she's a wonderful lady, she's a nice, uh, I'm glad to hear she's doing it.
Okay, um, you're back, did you want to make a report, or is the written report good enough?
Uh, hopefully it's all in its web form, so.
There's still a little bit of a drop in, um, in membership on the N W A C, is there anything going on there, or?
Yeah, we have three, um, unidentified, well, not identified, but three that have just joined the team and helped pass their two weeks, they're included in there, and we've also had impactful track. We have a couple of kids that have dropped because of track, not dropped, but they're just, you know, doing multi-sporting, come back a little bit. So, uh, we tend to, as I understand, uh, April tends to be just a little bit of a dip anyhow, but, you know, on the average, it won't dry out a week, and, um, I think, uh, just very confident in our plan for the future, and this is, uh, the numbers will be there, the numbers will be there. I think the bottom, the real question is, um, you know, when I look at the expenses, when I look at our revenues versus our labor expenses and our main category of expense beyond, uh, labor, that being travel, we're still running in under budget, a magnitude of over twenty-six hundred dollars from January one through April fourteen, I think it is more or less, and I make a point of making sure that's, uh, that's looked at every month, and, um, when I make, uh, you know, I consider options and choices for things like replacing or, or filling Jared's shoes temporarily, um, I make the decision for what is gonna be in the best interest of the club, which is the bottom line as well.
The, um, excuse me, um, quite a while ago, uh, you gave a business plan for the swim teams. Nothing happened that I can remember on it, except that we sort of looked at it and said we'd do it again, but then the world descended and we were dealing with a thousand other things. I really am quite excited with having worked with Gino in the last while on getting this, getting sort of a new horizon. I wonder if you could sort of take a look at your plan and bring it back so we can get some indicators there, so you can show us that you are living up to what you're expecting. Well, it's a very good set of indicators, it's just we never really got it to a point that was formalized and we could do that.
Appreciate it.
If it's not too much work, and then, and then when you talk in six months, you've got the plan there, and you can say, see, yeah, this is what we've done, and this is what we have, so.
Yeah, I could also like to see, um, the, the business plan, uh, included in one of these packets, but I haven't seen it as being a commission, I'll probably, not only the January, so, and if that's been in there. The other thing I'd like to see is, um, you know, we've been talking the last few months about the club recognition program, David, getting ourselves recognized in USA Swimming, uh, and there's, the plan under one through four, referencing various places, vision statement graphs, mission statements graphs, um, but I don't see anything we can hear that lets us know what those statements are, what those graphs are, where we are in that, in that, that process. Is that something that we can find online? Is that something that, okay?
Is it on the website?
Is that something, is that on the website?
Um, not yet. It's probably one of our weakest carriers right now, is getting the website.
Okay, the website looks definitely weak right now. Looks better than it used to, but at least, but it was weak back then, too.
Hey, hey, right now, we're on an uptrend.
Sorry.
And, um, but you'll, with the business plan, you'll cover some of that as well, except on the website, obviously. Ms. Rosen will be leaving in August?
Um, actually, um, Laura came on and, um, quickly realized that this was too much for her.
Okay.
And we're disappointed in that, but nonetheless, respect that, she's got some family memories that are really, um, and so, um, I have sent out with her, walked through that, looked for her possible, you know, uh, I think we're gonna, um, you know, I've looked at a couple of alternatives for replacing her, and, uh, I think I have the person internally, um, coming from, um, our lifeblood crew, who has background in competitive swimming, and is thrilled with the possibility of working with the Bronx kids. Looking very carefully at budget also, I want to make sure that, um, this is something that is going to fit within the budget, and I expect it to. Uh, one of the possibilities I'm looking at is doing perhaps a, kind of a co-teaching scenario, where we have one coach in the water and one out on the deck. This is something that, uh, I feel is, has a potential, and this is something that would be done on a limited basis, has a potential to really ramp up our development. I've seen it personally, um, experienced the positive results with the novice group which I coach, and I'd like to consider that as an option. So, um, Carly is the person that we're looking at as the replacement, and she would be available on full time, well, not full time, but a less than thirty hour basis, and is real excited with it.
Thank you, you just answered my question. And I imagine that she'll be working as the novice coach?
No, she'd be like, working as a Bronx coach.
Bronx coach, in addition to doing her life care, but she'll stay underneath that pressure.
Yes. We were pretty hard to make sure that that's, yes.
Thank you, and she understands why. Yes, yeah, 'cause, I mean, it's good, it's good for the employees to know that they're valued and what they bring in the organization is valued, but there's a big picture, so it's not, okay, thank you.
Matt, do you want to tell us about the pump?
It's not funny, Matt.
Well, uh, we were built top end, uh, and, uh, it seemed, it is healthy for pump, but that pump is not long to this world, is what we're seeing. Um, the bottom side, the bottom end with the turbines, uh, it's, it's going to fail real quick. Uh, we have, how would you say, we have probably two months, if we're lucky, if we hold our mouth right. Uh, the bottom end is just, it is, yeah, it's, it's wore out, and the actual turbines are, uh, start to slap the, the housing, uh, because the whole bottom end's washed out.
It's a dang shame the people who fixed the top part didn't maybe let us know the bottom part was.
Well, see, the bottom part is very expensive, it's cheaper to buy a whole new pump than it is to buy, than it is to get the parts for the bottom end, because you have to change the turbines, uh, both turbines, and actually, and there's, uh, and then there's four sets of bearings in the bottom, so, and, you know, there's, there's different things.
So just purchase one, what's the, uh, what's the bottom line?
Uh, we're running to need a new pump set.
At what cost?
So far, uh, I'm looking into a couple of different scenarios, uh, of course, I have some old, uh, estimates in there, uh, one for a stainless steel pump that's, you know, bright and shiny and should last for a while, one is pretty much for a pump that is better than the junk we have now.
For a block of key fans?
Yeah, uh, that, that have been sitting out in the shed for, since oh four. Uh, and I, I'm starting to, hopefully, have tomorrow in my possession, a estimate for a submersible pump that actually takes out everything that goes wrong in the damn things, and pretty much just breaks it down, barns down, and keeps it in the water where nothing, you know, there's no pump sticking out of it. Uh, it's a lot cheaper, and, uh, all right, all part of that, fifteen to twenty.
Okay, all part of the stainless steel, new parts?
Stainless steel, uh, sixty-two.
Okay.
Uh, but for what we have, uh, we're looking at, I think, twenty-two to twenty-five.
So we're looking at somewhere between fifteen to sixty-two.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir.
Our budget looks above the three. Sorry, that was a joke.
I was thinking, oh, it's a problem, it's still got the load in there.
Okay, and so we're gonna have to make that decision the next two months, I'll start switching.
Don't be sugar-dumb, kid, circulate the water.
All right, I think we have to look, realize, get some training on.
In circles, pumping down, really.
Okay, um, we, any other, did you have anything else that you wanted to bring, or are we okay?
I'm very sorry, it's bad.
Okay, any questions, any other questions on?
I did count the, you can come to me, or if that was working the opposite, it's not in the rules. You have a paper come to me and state that during his preferred time to lap swim, the noon hour, the available lanes are quite crowded, so.
When is his preferred time to lap swim?
Between the noon hour, noon and one, which is, oh, he was, I think he's, he said that he's had like Monday, Wednesday.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, do you have our best schedule just in there?
Mm-hmm, and he's supposed to do it.
Well, he does go Tuesday, but then there's, uh, private lessons or.
He needs to come at night. Nobody out there right now.
No, he was, I, I guess he was, he was just noticing that, that, that it was, and wanted to make a comment on it, so I said, I know.
It's also P R T season?
I would definitely make comment on it.
P R T.
It's P R T season.
That means that the.
The physical test for the safety.
Maybe we are getting home to.
Good.
Okay, there, um.
If they don't want, they can come back.
We lost a couple of events at seven AM.
Yeah, by the attendance report, there seems to be lots of space available if you can find a time, but the schedule is set, and, um, um, he might take a look at, you know, from my own experience, ten o'clock on Tuesday and Thursday, or ten-thirty isn't too bad for an hour if he wanted to go in just a little bit earlier than the noon.
He was popular.
Okay, any other things on the, on the staff reports? Okay, we have one like item, I think, left, and that is the, um, public records request, which Dave, you've done a huge job on, you could take over and. you've done a huge job on, you can take over and explain it.
Um, I borrowed help, and I'm not ashamed to say it, from a draft that is being put together by Anna from the City of Oklahoma. She was able to provide me a copy and since public agencies are allowed to steal from one another, I actually was saying it. I did, however, go through, ask the, Erica pointed out, a couple of things and you made me actually go back through and prove it. So, you'll see there's a highlighted copy where I made text changes.
Okay.
That does not include changes, I made to separate words that were squished together and insert commas where commas were necessary. So, this is, the reason I brought heavily from Anna is twofold. She is the chief clerk for the City of Oklahoma, she is also an attorney and she has done a lot of work since, since she has taken that position with the City of Oklahoma, not only with our public record policy, which was lacking, but also in public records retention. So, we'll be able to steal some, some good information there too and purge our, our office of things that we're allowed to purge, which helps us twofold because number one, if we have things that are, that are beyond the public record retention schedule, but we still have them in our office, there are still public records. If we have sent them over to the state archives, we can legally say we no longer have that record and we can direct them over there. But going back to the public records request policy, this is something that obviously our legal counsel needs to look over and make sure it meets the requirements of RCW 4256, but it does satisfy the requirement that you have a policy in place that gives us a working procedure by the head of staff and the public to see what that process is, who's responsible for that process. I can name one person as the public records officer, which would be the director, the records, it will designate somebody else to fulfill requests, but it also sets by a fee schedule that helps us with our costs. We are not allowed by law to charge for our time, we're not allowed to charge for copies, including any mailings and devices that we put copies on. We did, I did specifically put in here that if patron was not allowed to use their own devices in our systems, that would protect our systems from intrusions from any cyber attacks, whether it was intentional or not. It does also outline some obligations by the requister. For example, the requister is obligated to come and review in a certain specific time period or we are not by law obligated to hang on to that from a definite period of time or even fulfill a request that has been done in installments if the requister has not come within that time period to, to review. I looked heavily at RCW 4256 in verifying that what Anna put together was within the scope of the law. I think I had sent to you, Ellen, an attachment that included the items that were exempt and were...
Yeah, that's a huge, huge...
But I didn't include that in the draft, but that came directly out of RCW.
There you go. Yeah.
And that gets looked at every year and obviously it's something that, that our staff and director, something our director is being responsible on making, subject to that, because the director is the one who would take those requests and fulfill them. And he, he has authority in our policy to seek help from legal counsel, but does not. As our former director, he had been sending all public requests to the, to legal counsel, which was probably unnecessary.
Correct. Sure. Okay, would you be willing to move this as a policy subject to review by our lawyer or do you want us to send it to our counsel to have it reviewed or...
Absolutely, I can move that as, as, I, I could move it as a policy that is, you know, subject to, as a policy, let's give the front, front being...
Well, if we have it as a policy, we'll refer it to counsel and then we'll get it back and if there are any changes, then we can change it.
Okay.
But that means that we're accepting this as the policy, subject to legal...
Does that have to be handled by, by resolution?
Probably.
I'd like to make a motion and we accept the, that we approve the public records request policy as reviewed upon review and approval by legal counsel.
Second. Debate, questions?
I'd like to say thank you, David, this is...
Thank you, David. Okay, all in favor?
I have two, two questions, real quick, if that's okay. I'm just, just out of curiosity here, on the fee schedule for electronic, it's a 10, fee schedule 10C, the last sentence, I believe it is, what is this talking about, Dave? If the requister asks that the request be provided electronically or if staff must scan copies in order to fill the request, regardless of format, the per page charge shall apply. What is that?
That means that if the requister wants paper contents or copies of emails electronically, we still can recover the cost of having to provide those copies.
Okay, all right.
Without charging for our time.
Okay. So, it's a scan or a paper and each of those are 15 cents.
Right.
Is that right?
And the last question I had on, on this here, I just, I just want to see what your thought on it was, unless otherwise notified, your response will be completed within five business days. Do you guys, do you think that that may cause someone to think that it will be done within five days?
That was Erica's initial concern, was the initial draft after you said that staff shall complete within five days. So, you said, "Okay, you know what, you're probably right, you just have obligation to respond to it within five days."
Okay, all right.
So, the language of this, which is again a draft.
Right.
And again, this is not something that we have to drop right by the association, this can change. Any way, shape or form, we would change the wording on there to state that you will, you will have a, you will have a response in that, that would be our obligation at that point to say, here's how long we believe it's gonna take.
Okay, great. If you could do me one more favor, Anna, right, is her name?
Yeah.
Just tell her we said thank you and thank you for everything you've done. I know when I called her the one time, she was exceptionally kind and...
She's very, very helpful and she's very knowledgeable.
Okay.
And I, I'll be the first to say that I'm sure in formulating, again, the policy that she's drafted for the municipality, she has probably stolen from other...
Right. All right, I'm good, thank you.
It's something, I'm trying to make it exactly conformed at the same standard, guess what?
Basically, it's not what it's...
Okay.
We need to vote on it.
Have we not voted on it?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed.
Thank you.
And thank you, John.
No, I did.
Where are we?
I didn't know unless I needed to draft a resolution or if that's something I was thinking from.
Sure, let's see what you said. Did, is that what we said?
Well, it says in the manner of establishing public records procedure, whereas RCW 42.56.040 requires local agencies such as Northwood Department of Recreation District, the public procedures describing their manner of compliance with RCW 42.56. Public Records Act. Now therefore, be resolved by the force commissioner of the Northwood Department of Recreation District, that the director is designated and shall serve as the district public records officer and public records request will be delivered to the district office at John Better than Memorial Pool located at 85 Southeast Jerome Street, Ocrupi, Washington, 1877, and public records request the administrative process to coordinate the public policy and the district will comply with RCW 42.56 in its manner of receiving and responding to requests for public information day to day.
What I would suggest is you just move that right now and somebody second it and that's the process for handling this policy. And we've got the motion on this policy, which we'll refer to the lawyer when it comes back, that'll be our policy.
Okay, so I moved that, and what am I moving?
You're moving that page.
I moved that we accept the resolution to establish the Public Records Act procedure.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Who said move the car?
Sign please.
Oh, that's awesome.
Okay, now, public comments, any public comments?
All right.
Oh, you can make...
She said move the car.
Move the car.
That was awesome.
That sounded serious.
That's what Erica liked, any...
Can I add one of those?
Don't worry about it, I'll just put it in the file, I'll see Aaron, you know, all that is perfect. You did a super job on it.
Yes, you did. There you go.
I'll play it on my...
I've forgotten how to spell my name, that's it.
What do you have on that public comment?
Two, everyone?
Yeah.
Could you send one to me, please?
Yes.
Because I'll have to forward it to Nathan and if he has the one with the amendments on it, then I'll know it's clean.
I'd like to have that to you personally.
Perfect, thank you very much. Are we done? Unless there are any comments from the board?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. It's super done.
8:15, 7 PM.
Yes, next meeting, 8:15, 7 PM.